Okay ladies and gentlemen, it's now four o'clock. I'm gonna call workshop to order. Once again, if you want to speak, please send my administrative assistant, her name is my right, Vaughn Barber, and she will get you signed up.
Okay.
And I'm gonna ask Ms. Kelso to call the roll for City Council for workshop.
Okay, we're ready to call the roll. Okay McNabb? Not present. Wampler?
Present.
Kennedy?
Here.
Shields?
Here.
Brandon?
Here.
Simpson?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the item on the agenda tonight is discussion regarding entering into a minimum of understanding of Loudoun County Habitat Community for Potential Sales Tax Referendum. And I know Mr. Tony Givens is here with Habitat Executive Director. He is going to speak along with our Parks and Rec Director, Zach Cusick. So just to let you know how this came about, I'd asked, started talking to Mr. Givens about if Habitat was interested in going in with the city and if City Council passes to put something on the election commission for a vote, for the voters in May for a sales tax referendum. And of course, I know City Council has heard as most I have about affordable housing and how we can help our veterans and seniors. And I thought of another way than entering into a partnership with Habitat. And so that's, I asked Todd Kennedy, because I know that is in his line of work, to house meetings with us in special purposes and give us his thoughts on doing something like this. So, and I'll demonstrate for himself, but so that's where we're at. We've decided that to bring it forward to City Council. And obviously, and there's some, you know, I've heard some chatter out there about why you have a meeting at four o'clock, whether there's a timeframe involved, stable action commission that it takes, when we can put something on the agenda and when it has to be ready. And so obviously, City Council had counseled some meetings in December and November, so we're working on a timeframe here that we had to do. So I do want to obviously give the general public a chance to speak anytime at any of the meetings. So I want to announce if this, if it goes forward from here, at the first reading on December the 8th, we'll have public hearings starting at 5:30. And then go into City Council at 6:00. If it goes over that, we'll go into City Council meetings and then we'll finish the public hearing. As well as December the 29th, if it goes forward after December the 8th, December the 29th, we'll have another public hearing starting at 5:00 and go into City Council at 6:00. And again, if it goes over that public hearing, then we'll go into City Council and then I'll finish letting the public speak. I did want to remind, because I know there's some members of the general public here, that City Council is only authorizing, if they choose to do so, only authorizing for it to be put on the ballot. It's up to the people inside the city limits of Lenore City if they choose to pass it or not. So, you know, obviously, it's been, it's been a trial before when we went in the school system. But I do feel like that there is a need out there for housing, affordable housing. And obviously, the Parks and Rec Department, and Zach will enlighten us a little bit when he gets to speak, is in need of expansion. And it's nothing, we've been in need of expansion for the last 10 years. And he's working on a minimum staff, it's he and three or four more people. So we're out of space. We sent out a survey and we'll hear some more about that. And so the people, the survey that we got back says yes, more space is needed. And you can go out to any of the ball fields and any of the soccer fields and see that, though we're never going to be able to afford it unless we have additional revenue. And a property tax increase is not the answer. A property tax increase, one penny, only brings in thirty-four to thirty-six thousand dollars. So there's no way we can raise property tax enough to pay for something like that for expansion of Parks and Rec. It's never gonna happen. Or it's not gonna happen as long as I'm here. It's just, we can, we could afford it. The people of Lenore City could afford it. So we know what the sales tax, additional sales tax would bring in. And when we talk about the additional sales tax, it's seventy-five cents on one hundred dollars worth of groceries. Seventy-five cents and everybody would pay it. Along with people that's traveling on 321 and going to the mountains, ones just coming through Lenore City stopping getting gas or a bag of chips or a drink, everybody pays. And it brings in approximately four million dollars. So we would share that with Habitat, share it as far as Habitat would receive a million dollars of that four million. And I'm using some raw numbers, the numbers that...
And this would be each year as well?
It would be each year. And it would go towards affordable housing. The city would have nothing to do with it. Habitat would follow their same rules that they've got in place now. And the monies would be turned over to them and they would run it just as they run it today without our money. So I'll wrap it all up. Mr. Kennedy, do you have anything you want to add before I call on Mr. Givens to be our speaker? Do we have anybody signed up among?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I don't have anything else to add. I look forward to Mr. Givens' presentation. I know the, certainly a need for Parks and Recreation expansion, but also a need, especially in the older housing stock, for emergency repairs and things of that nature to prevent blight. So anyways, I look forward to hearing more about it. And of course, as the mayor said, this is up to the public to decide, not for us to decide. So I look forward to hearing what the plans are and what it all entails.
Also, did you ever show that Ms. McNabb...
Yes, yes I did. And may I, I have a more thing before we turn it over to Mr. Givens and Ms. Rachel Rendon. You know, just like Councilman Kennedy said, the City Council is not voting for this sales tax referendum to go through. That's an important point to make. It's not the City Council's decision. It is the people's decision and City Council's decision of whether or not to put this on a ballot for the people of Lenore City to choose if they want a sales tax to go through for these purposes. The City Council is not making that choice. I believe sometimes it gets confused a little bit and people say, oh, the mayor and City Council want this to go through. No, we want to give that option to the people, just like, you know, we have any other target change or referendum for the past hundred and something years. The other thing is, and mayor noted, we're talking about on one hundred dollars of groceries, it's seventy-five cents increase in sales tax. Also, the sales tax is gonna be paid by people who don't even live here. People who travel and get off at Highway 321 to go to the mountains. People that don't impact our resources. They don't utilize our school systems. They don't use our garbage collection services. They don't really utilize our fire protection services unless there's a medical emergency. These are people not impacting our resources, but are all putting into our community, our infrastructure and our people. So I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Tony. I see that you broke your log.
I did.
All right. Back to you, Grace.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, good evening, good afternoon, good day. Tony Givens, Loudoun County Habitat Executive Director. Very pleased to be here and appreciate your time on hearing our proposal, our concept, our vision of how this partnership would look for the affordable housing component of it. I do want to take a moment to recognize not only our attorney, Chris Froy, Rachel Rendon is our Development Director and handles a lot of the statistical data that we deal with when we're working on, well, all aspects of the programming. And then Chris Callahan is, you may not recognize him without his hat on, but he is our Homeowner Services Director. And he not only helps the families from the very beginning of application through the completion of the program, he also oversees the critical repair program and aging place program. So he can tell you on a ground level of what he is seeing and he's gonna be commenting on one of the pieces of today's presentation. Just as a reminder for everyone here, Loudoun County Habitat Community has been around in this community for more than thirty years. The organization is part of a larger umbrella effort of Habitat Community International that's been around for fifty years. And we have done a lot of great work in that time period. Most people identify us through our new construction for homeownership with low-income families who are not able to obtain a conventional mortgage, but have the potential of being credible homeowners if given the opportunity. And that's what we do. We gain and provide them with that opportunity. And it leads to improving their credit scores, reducing their debt over an eighteen-month period so that they can be in a sound position to carry a mortgage that's affordable. It also requires them to be involved with sweat equity contributions, participating in the program on the job site, restore, all aspects, so that they have skin in the game. I want to emphasize that this is not a handout organization. Along the way, we saw a need, not just this affiliate, but across the United States, we saw a need for the preservation of affordable housing. When we look at the tenants of our organization, it's not just about creating affordable housing, it's about preserving it. So to date, we have built one hundred and thirty homes in four different, or three different neighborhoods. We're about to start our fourth one. We've also completed just shy of one hundred and seventy or so critical repairs, maybe it's even more than that. We have several that recently completed. But the thing is, is that we're pretty active in the community. Those repairs are for folks who are low-income, who own their homes, but they don't have the means to take care of the home because of reasons that a lot of folks don't even, they don't even understand, or they don't, they don't have an insight on. That's part of what we're gonna be talking about today. We also have, what came out of that program is a rebuild program. This is where we came across structures in the communities that needed repairs, but it was gonna be cost prohibitive in some way. And it led to us looking at, how do we take, for example, mobile home where the family owns it, but it can't be repaired, remove that mobile home and replace it with a stick build that comes with a zero percent mortgage? Makes it affordable for the family. Often, this is with a senior. So as you can see, each, each segment along the way, we've seen an issue in the community that was unintended and we've leaned in to try to be a resource for it. We build partnerships with churches, businesses, government, civic clubs, individuals to make this work possible. We have a calling, and that's to help our folks in our community have safe homes to be able to thrive, build generational wealth, but mostly be safe in a decent affordable house. Now, a lot of this you all already know, because you've been at our dedications, you've been at our restore, you've heard the presentations at Houses in Hope every year. But it's important for you all to know that we're much more than just building homes. We're preserving homes. So what does that mean here? We're looking at a potential of a million dollars a year. Our current budget is two and a half to three million a year. We have a critical repair program that runs about two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand a year. And it's not enough. A million dollars a year would be a game changer. It would just be a game changer. Not for my salary, okay? Not for the building that we work in, but for the residents of Lenore City. It would be investing in our community and in our people so that we are ahead of the things that often undermine a city, like light, like depressed property values, like safety issues, or increased costs with the local hospital business. So how do we get there? Well, first, we look at the fact that we're talking about working with seniors and individuals with disabilities. Ninety percent of the folks that we currently work with in our critical repair program are seniors. About ten percent of them are individuals with disabilities and about ten percent are veterans. A lot of them are former teachers, first responders, healthcare workers. They're everyday people that have been a part of this community for years, who have retired in their home and they have found themselves in a situation that they thought they planned for and something came up. And so their budget is a fixed income focused on utilities, food and medical needs, mostly medicine. In any of those three orders, it doesn't matter, because we get through those three, there's nothing left. And often what happens is you have a roof that's kind of old, starts leaking. Okay, we'll put that off to next year or the following year. But that leaking roof then creates a problem for the ceiling that rotts out and then creates a problem for the flooring, which then becomes not only a bigger expense, but it's something that becomes a safety hazard for that individual walking around in the house. And it's not just a trick hazard. Mold then develops and then you have respiratory issues that trigger and you can see the domino effect. Now, anybody in this room who has had a senior in their home, their family, their world, they know that there are natural events in a person's life that are gonna be sensitive to how and where you live and that's what we're trying to address. I'll go to the next slide. So we have, we have a video that we want to share with you. Now, this is where Chris is gonna come up when he's done playing this Tetris game. But this is a local community, a local family here in Lenore City that we helped a couple years back. And it's gonna demonstrate a number of different, very important messages that often are not heard by the general public, but definitely support the need for this type of programming in any community. So this video, Chris, I'm gonna let you step in and pick it up.
This video originally originated Chancery Court out of Nashville, Tennessee. Awarded a lot of money. Part of that went to Tennessee, the whole of the state. Some of that was doled out to Loudoun County Habitat. So it was through the Chancery Court. We called it the Senior Housing Trust Fund. And one of the families that had applied for the program was the Petty family here in Lenore City. So I wanted to share their story with you all.
Call Charles, ever.
Okay. Oh, you have it.
Charles threw it on for us earlier.
Oh, did it work earlier?
Yeah.
Call it down here.
It might be because that mops on. If you push that button, see if that works. Hey, we're about to listen to the video or turn on video and the sound, the sound is not making for me. Okay. I don't know. Okay, okay, okay. Huh. Okay. He's good.
Just bear with us, we'll get it here, babe.
We tested it earlier.
Yeah.
All right.
Hi, how, where are we? How close are we? Oh, you're, you're walking in. Okay, got, thanks.
He's walking in.
He's walking in.
That was a good ask.
Technical issues, you know, always. It doesn't matter what you do, you want, there's always a technical issue.
I turned the TV.
Do you want us to talk about maybe the process while we're waiting on this?
Yeah, let's give just a minute, you're probably here in circles.
Should I turn to Air Force? Can we play it that way? It's pointing to like the back one.
That was the one back there?
Yeah.
That sounds like, yeah, that is amazing.
Oh, sorry.
You know, my T L S tells you to break start. I'm just looking, looking back.
I love Max, but there are always problems.
Always.
Oh, Max.
That's what I use. I'm saying this.
Thank you.
Oh, you know, this is...
We're gonna try and just play it here.
Okay, with the mic? Is the, the video's not on the flash drive, right? It's in the West.
And this is playing a little bit.
I'm gonna start it here.
There you go.
Teen, nineteen years, and it's a great place to live.
We live actually in my mother's house. After she passed, we moved up here.
It's seven years old. Has had a lot of wear and tear on it. Roof's leakings in the house, porch everywhere.
I was about to fall in, I mean, really, it was about to fall in.
It was proper with two white forms all the way around.
Anytime we could walk out the door, it wet. It was pouring down from the door. Every time I said it's gonna rain, I just patted because I thought, well, I don't know if it's gonna cain or not.
We did a home assessment. First thing we saw was the front porch was pretty much caving in. The carport, street porch was rotting out through the turnbikes and water, native jewelry years, which has been a cause of secondary contamination within the house, that we issued more than what they had.
Habitat made it very, very easy. Chris came out and brought the forms. All we had to do was come over, sign it and wait.
But when they come here, they did very well.
They did, we picked up, went and sealed it.
I picked it up.
You know, I'm not a trained sociologist, I'm not a trained medical caseworker, but I come in and look at the structure of a home and say, here's what we need to repair. Instead of holistically helping the family, not just having a structure within their lifestyle, so once we leave, they're still being taken care of.
Well, I'm just saying, I couldn't get up, they have porch here and they forced us to get a ramp put in, which now I can get it out easily. I've got a pan cat bed, so now I can get up, go store. So I might do a getaway for her. And that one, only I can get out is the A plus.
We saw the ramp that he was using was a piece of plywood, nowhere's near the slope with that ADA ramp needs to be, you know, split, slippery. And his accessibility was very limited.
It was very unsafe. I just took a deep breath and say, hallelujah, because it is wonderful. Peace to mind.
Yes. He had to pay that Billy Jo for everything. Billy Jo's age, she's got her health issues. So it was very difficult for the both of them to take care of each other. Putting in the ramp took a burden off Billy Jo as far as how much care do I have to give Cecil as last until a degree, to cease his mobility freedom.
What they did, they, you know, I'm about to cry now.
Back porch, we did all that, the carport, out there, it's great.
And we were excited so much about this porch.
Porch means a lot. Now that I have the ramp, I can actually pull myself up and down with my regular chair. But before, I had to use this electric chair and so Ray was out of the question. She's got porch here, they can decorate, it's made her happy, she's been a happier person. I've been a happier person and I think the neighbors should be happy.
I know they are.
Cecil is thrilled because he's got more freedom and Billy Jo feels great because she feels safe and it's given them a sense of, hey, we got pride in this house and this house looks good now and we're proud of it. And again, Cecil that independence.
It's just made me happier knowing that we're safer. My grandkids are safer when they come in here.
Knocked a lot of worries off us, so we, we can argue that sentence.
Because of the lack of funding that we had, we could not do anything inside the house. We just ran out of dollars. So Cecil's independence was able to access to, from the house, inside the house, he couldn't access the bathroom. A lot of things he couldn't do. We didn't have money to do it, you know? You like to have money to do everything holistically for a family? Absolutely. With the limiting funds, it's just so much we can do. And best we can do for that family is give a little bit of joy, a little end story.
You know, I'm, I'm not a trained sociologist, I'm not a trained medical caseworker, but I come in and look at the structure of a home and say, here's what we need to repair. Instead of holistically helping the family, not just have a structure within their lifestyle, so once we leave, they're still being taken care of.
Well, I'm just saying, I couldn't get up, they have four chairs, they raised for us to get a ramp put in, which now I can get it out easily, I've got a pan cat bed, so now I can get up those doors, I'd like to get away from her. That one only I can get out is the A plus.
We saw the ramp that he was using was a piece of plywood, nowhere's near the slope with an ADA ramp needs to be, you know, split, slippery, and his accessibility was very limited.
It was very unsafe. I just take a deep breath and say, hallelujah, because it is wonderful, peace of mind.
Yes, he had to pay that Billy Joe for everything. Uh, Billy Joe's agent, she's got her, her health issues, so it was very difficult for the both of them to take care of each other. Putting in the ramp took a burden off Billy Joe as far as how much care do I have to Cecil, that's less than to a degree, Cecil's mobility freedom.
What they did, they, you know, I'm about to cry now.
The back porch, we did all that, the carport, out there, great.
And we were excited so much about this porch.
Porch means a lot, now that I have the ramp, I can actually pull myself up and down with my regular chair, but before I had to use this electric chair, and so Ray was out of the question, she's got porch everything to decorate, it's made her happy, she's been a happier person, I've been a happier person, and I think the neighbors should be happy.
I know they are.
Cecil is thrilled because he's got more freedom, and Billy Joe feels great because she feels safe and has given them a sense of, hey, we got pride in this house, and this house looks good now, and we're proud of it, and again, Cecil that independence.
It's just made me happier knowing that we're safer, my grandkids are safer if, when they come to me.
Knocked a lot of worries off, so we, we can argue that sentence.
What that video doesn't show you is the inside of the house. Because of the lack of funding that we had, we could not do anything inside the house, we just ran out of dollars, so Cecil's independence was able to access to, from the house, inside the house, he couldn't access the bathroom, a lot of things he couldn't do, we didn't have money to do it, you know. You like to have money to do everything holistically for a family, absolutely, but with the limiting funds, it's just so much we can do, and the best we can do for that family is give a little bit of joy, a little end story, both, both Cecil and Billy Joe had passed away, so they were able to at least have some enjoyment for a year to live what we're doing for them. So, that's, you know, typical families we serve, we, we've had one family here in Lenore City, he was a bus driver most of his life, he worked down here at Marina, uh, he, all he wanted was a back deck replaced, so we walked into the home, and his wife's on oxygen, they got window units in the house, and he's like, all I want is my back deck replaced. Like, sir, your wife has breathing problems, she's breathing in air coming in from a window unit, that's not healthy, so through the funding we were able to provide, we were able to get them central heat and air, uh, of course, part of that means we had upgraded a little bit the electrical in the house, which is a blessing considering they were burning up their plugs by running space heaters, so on top of his back deck, that we were able to do for him, he also got him a central heat and air unit, and it helped his wife under breathing issues, and it reduced the odor in the house, so that's typical of the families we run into, uh, some we've done full bathroom remodels, but just to touch a bathroom remodel today where you just leave the existing bathroom in there, you're talking eight to ten thousand dollars, just get a roll and shower, and that don't always give them the room they need to spin around in a wheelchair, so, you know, with more funding, we can make that house a little bit more suitable, but after that walls, build a bigger bathroom for them, so they could have better accessibility, but a lot of it comes down to us, it's just, we have some funding, but not everything we need.
Honey, how do you get, you talk about sweat equity, how do you get to your Chris, obviously, these folks here, they, they certainly couldn't do that, so how do you eliminate the service sustainability policy?
Yeah, well, we asked the families, you know, on our new homeownership, they come out, they work job sites, restores, with the seniors, what we ask them is anything, provide bottled water for the youth, people that come out, do the work at your home, come out and thank them, a lot of our volunteers and subcontractors that work on the houses, they want to hear these people's stories, what was their life about, what was Lenore City like thirty years ago, they gained just as much as the seniors do, so that's pretty much what we ask, is provide some water, sometimes they'll provide cookies, but, you know, they like to be out there just chatting with the volunteers and subcontractors, it builds the community.
Yeah, so the thing I was gonna add is that they, we ask that they prepare the site so that whether it's volunteers or contractors coming in, that it's suitable for whatever is going to be done, that they, that they're onsite so that that engagement can happen, but also in case there are questions that come up, we can consult with them appropriately. Now, when we come into this, you know, they might be reaching out, as Chris mentioned, about one piece of it, and we do a whole house assessment, and we see that over the next five years, there are gonna be some serious needs, we enter a contract with that family about what's gonna be done and what's not gonna be done, and make sure that it's really about safety and accessibility, we want them onsite to see what we're doing so that they know that this is, as we said it would be.
And one of the last things is, people always ask, well, you spent forty thousand dollars on this senior's house, what are they gonna do, turn around and flip it, make money, move to Florida? Yeah, they can, but what we do in our program is we put a restrictive covenant on the home for five years that's forgivable, so as long as they're in the home for five years, what we put in goes down to zero, if they turn around and sell in year one, that four fifths of the dollar amount of the repair comes back to us, which we recycle back into the program for repairs, so we do have a mechanism in place if any senior wants to take advantage of the program, I want that to be known, it's important to protect, integrity of the program.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
So I'm gonna ask Rachel to comment on statistics as well, but as she's preparing to do that, the, yeah, we, we had mentioned that we didn't have enough funds to complete the needs in that home, and a lot of that has to do with the fact that most, all of the grant funding out there has a cap of how much funding can go into it, almost all of it is capped at fifteen thousand per address, so at some point or another, you can layer it as much as you want, you're gonna run out of funding, the beauty of this opportunity is that it gives us funding that is not restricted in that way, but also can leverage those grants that we have out there to really tackle a, an issue that is compounded by the fact that the housing crisis is hitting material costs especially, so it is, it is something that will move with the current economics. Rachel, you wanna talk about, a little bit about the Lenore City data numbers?
Hello, I'm Rachel, I'm the development director at Loudoun Habitat, and I know none of you need me to read you a bunch of numbers and stats for us all to know that Lenore City is growing really, really quickly, um, but while we do look at these numbers, I just wanna make sure that we set the stage by remembering that specifically, our senior population is a quarter of the population in Lenore City. That video we just watched of the Pettys is not a standalone incident, unfortunately, because it's so many seniors living on fixed income, they are a higher percentage of the, of the people living impoverished, so there are a lot of homes and a lot of families in a worse state than the video that we already saw, so I just wanna make sure that we keep a face to these numbers as we go through them, um, and just a precursor, all of these numbers are from the US Census, so you can see them all online if you wanna dig through the very exciting read that is the census. In Lenore City, about half of our housing stock is over fifty years old, um, this data comes from up until twenty twenty, so there, there obviously have been many homes built since then, but there have also been many that have aged out, so it is right around the fifty percent mark of our housing stock, is about fifty years old or older, and twenty percent of Lenore City's citizens are living below the poverty rate, and, um, as we all know, housing is in short supply even with new builds around here, and the average price for a new home today in Lenore City is just under five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If you're a family that is making sixty thousand dollars a year, that means you're not buying that house, and unfortunately, there really are not many at all that are going up for sale that are even three hundred thousand or less, there are essentially none that are two hundred and fifty, except for houses from Loudoun County Habitat, and when you do find those homes, they need pretty extensive repairs, which those people are not usually equipped to do, unfortunately, the state of rentals is pretty similar, there are very many good rental options. I think that is pretty much the whole book that I have to say.
Can you, I despair to see that last one, whatever the age of the population, can you touch on that?
Yes, a quarter.
The last one.
Yes, twenty-five percent of Lenore City's population is sixty years or older, and across the entire population, uh, the poverty rate is about twenty percent of everyone, but that rate is higher in the senior population because of so many of them living on fixed income.
And does it say ten percent are veterans?
Yes, yes, ten percent of the total population are veterans. Any other questions?
Let me jump in on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I appreciate your comment out there, the, there's a couple reasons that we don't see more referrals from veterans at this point, a lot of times they don't know about the services available for them, or it's a family member of someone who's served, who is living by themselves, or they're a, a grandparent raising a grandchild, and they're just trying to get through it one week at a time, so they don't think that, oh, Habitat might be a resource for helping them with this issue that they can put off, they think they can put off till tomorrow, uh, they're, they're trying to work through things in today, in the present, so, you know, ten percent of the veterans, or ten percent of the population being veterans, I can tell you that in the twenty years that I've been with Habitat for Humanity, it is one of the hardest kind of community populations to connect with, and so much of what I've been told by our staff, our volunteers that are veterans, is that there's a lot of pride and self-sufficiency with individuals who come from military background, and they don't wanna ask for help even when everybody is saying it's needed, so, you know, this is something that we've been working on for a number of years before even this proposal, was that how do we reach more veterans in our community, given the obstacles that are there.
And when you and I first talked, that's something that I encouraged you to do, I wanted, if this did pass, I wanted you to be sure and target the veterans and the seniors, because I felt like that, that obviously there was a need there with those student groups, and, and one of the things I do wanna bring up before we forget it, the general public's knowledge, and, and you and I talked about this as well in the, in the group, is if it does pass, and at some point, and, and there's been some discrepancies when this could happen, and obviously, we would have to find out, but if it does pass, and that, and at some point, if the county chooses to adopt or pass, whether that be the referendum or the county commission vote, that your number could get reduced down to five hundred thousand dollars, because the total number would get reduced as well, so, so I want council to be aware of that, if the county does, does choose to, uh, adopt it or pass it at some point in time, that number could get reduced down.
Which we would have no control over that.
Yeah, no control whatsoever, so, we're clear on that, correct? I know we are.
Yes, thank you.
I just wanna hear you say it for the general.
That's affirmative, uh, yeah, and I, I appreciate you raising that, that's, you know, we've done a couple what ifs scenarios in light of that, I, I wanna just start with a response to that saying, we're thrilled that you all approached us, that you see Habitat as a solution, that you see the need out there, just that you see the need, a lot of these families do not, they choose to look the other way, put funding into other sources, and not to put value statements on whether or not those other sources are, are important or less, lesser or more, it's, it's about the fact that you all are seeing this as a real problem today, and even a bigger problem for tomorrow if we don't do something about it, yes, we wanna see things go on with Parks and Rec, I, I happen to see the, the value with that too, I love that we're partnered with Parks and Rec, because it's about preserving the way of life here in Lenore City, it's not just about, you know, funding a pet project or something that, I don't know if it's a pet project, but I'm just saying, it's not about a special interest, it's about helping as many people in this community as possible, we're looking at this, if it's half a million, we'll figure out a way to make that, that work, if it's a million, not only will it help with critical repairs, we've done sixty-six in this community, if the average cost of one of those repairs is about twenty thousand dollars, it's just shy of that, we could do forty-five or so projects in a year with those funds without even leveraging, can you imagine what we could do if we leveraged those funds? So that led me to think that, can you go back to the slide where we showed the different program? You know, we, I don't know if we have that there, the critical repairs, what we would look at, the total rebuilt homes, you know, this is something that, you know, there's actually a, a family that we came across in Lenore City that has repair needs beyond any single source, any three sources combined, and this was, what, Chris, five years ago when, yeah, uh, when they were looking for repairs, there was not enough money out there, now the house needs to be replaced because it's that bad, we would then be able to go in with these funds to build a new home, a sick-built Habitat home, they would carry a mortgage on it, those funds would continue to feed and serve this community, and that person would be living in a safer, decent, affordable home, that, that's part of what's happening with the age of our homes, just getting older, and they're gonna run into natural degrading and, and disrepair if we don't invest in them in some way or another, and that's part of what, you know, this, this concept is later down the road, we would like to also look at, especially if the million dollars is, is what comes through, how do we help serve moderate income families, how do we help address bigger projects in the community that affect affordable housing, maybe that's repurposing developed, uh, commercial land that is vacant, uh, maybe it's a down, not a down payment, it's a repair assistance program for a family that makes average income, but because material costs are so high, that, but that addressing that repair in their own home becomes a challenge, the moderate income family, I'm not trying to take this away from low income families, but the moderate income family is getting just hammered with this housing market, and there are no resources for them, this is an opportunity for a, a very forward-thinking approach to investing in Lenore City, its people, its facilities, in a way that gets ahead of any kind of issues that hurts businesses and growth and safety, so our, our hope is that you all receive to carry this forward so that voters can vote on it, and our hope is that the voters will see that this is valuable for their everyday lives, for the people that they care about, even if it doesn't directly impact them, so, that's my speech. All right, we have, we have staff here, if you wanna ask specific questions about the process, how would we handle the funds, all of that, we have, just last tidbit is, we have a long history of using federal, state, local dollars, we are trained and experts on transparency at that respect, so this is something that would not be a new, a new rodeo for us, it is old path, and our, our commitment back to the city would be to provide annual report on what those activities were during the year, how the money was spent, how it wasn't, is there any carryover, how is it benefiting the folks here in Lenore City, so I just wanna make sure that you all know that, any funds that came in on this would be held in a separate account, would not be co-megal, and it would be managed in a way that protected that, that investment.
And in order to stay inside the city limits, I'm sure.
How, absolutely.
And I had one, I had one question that I was asked earlier, and I said, I didn't know, uh, with the Habitat board, I certainly don't want to sit on it, uh, but I was asked if the Habitat board would entertain a city councilperson or a city representative, a city on the board, uh, so, you, I don't, you can answer that if you can, you probably can, and I know you have a board to answer to, but I certainly don't want to sit on the board, and, and I don't want to be in charge of pointing anybody either, because I, I personally think that it needs to be independent, we need to keep it that way, we need to, Habitat needs to be the one, I don't, I don't want any politically influenced, if you will, uh, involved in it whatsoever, and I think you all do a fantastic job with the, with the money that you have, and, and I think we're trying to target a very much needed, but very much needed to, especially for our veterans and our seniors, and, and you all are the experts, and you, and obviously, you've been around thirty-plus years, so you must be doing something right, and, and as you say, you're dealing with federal dollars and state dollars, and having dealt with that, I know how particular that, how Bob and how you must dot your i's and cross your t's, so, uh, I appreciate, I certainly appreciate the work that Habitat does, and at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to the members of city council, they may have some questions for you, so, anybody?
I was just gonna say, I appreciate Chris's explanation on the restricted covenants, that, that is always a concern, well, I shouldn't say always, but it is a concern that I hear sometimes, is are people gonna be able to take advantage of a program like this to, you know, be financially enhanced from it, and this is about preservation of, of homes, and so I was glad to hear that there are guardrails in place to prevent that kind of, of activity, so, and as the mayor stated, the, the projects will be in the city limits, so.
So, and as the mayor stated, the projects will be in the city limits, so it's, city voters will decide, and if it's passed, then the city residents will reap the benefits from it, so.
But what you were saying, what you were saying about two to five years, that kind of reminds me of the home grant, you know, that we used to, that we used to be able to get here in Lorr City for the residents, and it was a five-year lane, basically, and then at the end of the five years, you release the lane, or they could get a portion of it, it'd be prorated. One question that I had was, as far as, you know, like, you go into someone's home and you repair, you renovate, you make it safer, healthier for these people, is there anything, any way, any mechanism that you can then later go back if they need additional help? Like, some of these people aren't able to maintain, you know, what you've improved for them, you know, there has to be maintenance. Is there any mechanism for that? And that, I mean, and that may have nothing to do with what we're discussing, that's just maybe a general question about your program.
No, I really appreciate you bringing that up because it's at the heart of the aging-in-place concept. And Chris, you're welcome to come up here and chime in as needed. I just want to plug Amber for not twitching when she received the home grant. It is a heavy lift. You know, federal grants out of HUD are very tedious, and it definitely takes a special person to administer those, and that's why I have Chris, because I'm not a special person. But there is a process that I think is important that you've talked about. Can you take us through some of the very relevant sections?
Short answer, Amber's no. And what I mean by that is if we go through a grant through, let's say, Federal Home Loan Bank, we do the work. It may be five years before they say we'll approve our work on that family. ERP program through the Tennessee Housing Development Agents has a dollar amount. Hey, once you hit thirty thousand, you're done.
You're done, yeah.
You're done.
That's how most are.
So, short answer is no. However, when we did the Senior Housing Trust Fund, I don't understand, I've been a double dip on that fund, but I would help this family of this money here, and then they call me a year later and say, hey, you know, my air conditioner just went out. Then I can say, ah, I use Senior Housing Trust Fund pot of money. I'd go to Federal Home Loan Bank now because I didn't touch them before because we had this money, so I'll use that. So, it's kind of the strategy game, but having funds like that, Senior Housing Trust Fund really opened the door for us, and we're able to save some of that pot of money for down the road for the same family.
Because I can see that being a recurring issue, especially with seniors.
Yep. As long as there's no stipulation.
That's great, yeah.
We can come back at the end of the day.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah. The benefit to this particular funding mechanism is that we wouldn't have to put a restriction on it in that respect, and often, what we come across is that it's not specifically related to their lifestyle behavior or their specific stage in life behavior, but it's, there was some kind of storm damage on the house. And we may have fixed something on the inside, but now the roof needs to be replaced, or something's happened with the HVAC unit. Well, HVAC unit's twelve thousand dollars. And that's not something that you can do spaghetti dinners with at your local church. So, the aging-in-place concept is really about building a relationship with the individual. And so, what happens is we go in based off of referral, we assess the whole house, as we've mentioned before, by a third-party inspector, so it's not even somebody related to Habitat. We work through what the critical needs are for safety and accessibility, and then we build a contract with the family and execute the work. But that work is not all done in one day. We have it spread over multiple visits, which allows us to build a relationship with the family, but also keep eyes on some of the things that are not housing-related. Like, are those dishes in the sink the same dish that were there a week ago? Are they struggling with daily life care? And do we need to make them call to help with finding them some daily support? Are they starting to show signs of dementia or some other natural aging process characteristic? So, it's an extra set of eyes, and it's an extra piece of the community that's leaning in to support somebody who may not have anyone to lean on. And so, we're keeping an eye out for those families and in the meantime, taking care of their general everyday safety.
Thank you, Tom. Does anybody have any questions before we get into the next speaker? You want to know?
If I may add, if in the event that this goes through, so that it's up to the voters in name, we've already started crafting how to best be accessible by the public for follow-up Q and A, whether it's public forums or if it's some other mechanism. But we want to make sure that the information is out there so that people can ask the questions and get the best answer that's available. We feel like that's really critical, so if this goes through, the city council will be leaning in that direction so that the citizens here in Lorr City can know what the vote is about.
Thank you very much, and obviously, the first meeting is on December the eighth in the public hearing at five thirty. You can be sure and put that down and have staff here as well, go through the same process in case someone's new, it's not a senior, it's not here. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Mr. Kuzin, you're up.
All right. Thank you all for having this workshop, getting everything rolling here. I'll just jump into it. I'll give you a quick background of our facilities and our properties that we have in Parks Recreation, starting with our crown jewel at City Park over by Fort Loudon Dam. It's approximately thirty acres, with two playgrounds and a separate dog park. Part of that is seven shelters that can be rented out to the public, small walking trail around the pond, eighteen-hole disc-off course, a sand volleyball court, two tennis courts that can be turned into four pickleball courts, small fishing pier and a T-dog, as well as a boat ramp, and two women's restrooms and men's restrooms on either side of the park. The events that we hold at this special park for ours is the Rock in the Docks event, the Arch and Craft Festival event, the East Ridge Hound and Touch Truck event, the Carboard Boat Race, Youth Outdoor Day, the Walk to Remember, Festival of Friends, private shelter rentals, fishing tournaments, National Weightlifting Pro Tour is coming to the pass, as well as summer youth camps. Moving on to Rock Springs Park, just off of Rock Springs Road, it's four point five acres. It has one playground, a park shelter, a small walking trail on the back end, and a men's and women's restroom as well. The Lee Russell Recreation Complex, or as the locals call it, the complex, is right at twenty acres with four baseball or softball fields. And like the mayor mentioned, we, every time during fall and spring baseball seasons, softball seasons, it's completely covered up. We've ran out of parking.
How many thousands of people would you say are up there?
Well, for the factors.
Because it feels like a million.
This past fall, we have over five hundred youth that are on those teams, count mom and dad, grandparents for each. You know, it's multiple thousand that come to these experiences for practices, games, and enjoy the park. We have even their school teachers, we have their church leaders, we have everybody coming out to it just to support the community, and that's kind of the meat of what I'll get to, is we're here for the community. But going in with the Lee Russell Complex, the concession basement office, two garages, storage spaces, and men's and women's restrooms. This property, like I mentioned before, does hold our spring and fall baseball, softball, and one of our programs that is fairly new the last couple of years, but is also growing, is our flag football. And during flag football, we'll actually turn one of the baseball fields into at least one flag football field, and then if the numbers continue to grow like they have been, we'll have to turn another baseball field into a flag football field as well. And lucky me, I get the headache of scheduling all those games, but it's well worth it to do something great for the community. Moving on to downtown with our War Memorial Building, which was built in nineteen fifty-one. It's approximately sixteen hundred square feet, one regulation basketball court, one stage, kitchen, small storage, eight small storage closets, two meeting rooms there at the front and beside the lobbies that are earmarked for the American Legion, the Women's Auxiliary. I know the Women's Auxiliary rooms also rented out for Loudoun County Shrine Club and local Girl Scout troops. And that's one of our pillars downtown, that's just always been here for the community. A part of the grant that it received from the state back in nineteen fifty, ever since it's been built, it's always been for the community, used by the community, and just been a lifesaver for multiple things. The events that are held there, we use our youth basketball program, which is sitting at about four hundred and ninety kids this past winter, this current winter, for practices, for games, for end-season tournaments. We use it for our evening, we're saying, I'm coming up here in just two weeks. We'll have open gym events during school breaks and camps, events for the community, private parties. We've also been just a, been able to reach out to local schools, Little City High School basketball practices, North City Middle School, North Middle practices, Highland Park practices, adult basketball rec leagues, and that's one of the things that Parks and Rec just loves to do is to completely help out our community, whatever it is, whatever they need. You know, time is the only issue there, since we've done some renovations to it in the past. It's rented out five or six different times, every Saturday, five or six different times every Sunday, with multiple flip-overs with in-between different parties and mission groups, but if the time does allow it and the schedule is there, then we try to help out the local teams and schools as much as we can. Similar to doing that is also our Little City Pool, which is a six-lane, twenty-five-yard swimming pool with a small splash pad used up during the summer, but the pool itself is year-round, men's and women's restroom. We use that for open swim, lap swim, water aerobics, swim lessons, private lessons, rentals for swim lessons, for swim teams, and winter and summer in both of those as well. And that's something that's grown over the years. We didn't have a summer swim team until just a couple of years ago. Now, we've got a swim team that's another program that we can offer to the kids in our community. Moving back to downtown is our Little City Central Park, which is our newest park, and it holds just under three acres. It's our only all-access playground for not only just Lorr City, but also the county. One park pavilion, one large splash pad, two men's and women's restrooms at different sites at the facility. And then we hold our Christmas tree lighting, which is shameless, but it's actually tonight after this workshop. If you all want to be there, I'll be there, we'll be able to bring in the Christmas season and light up the park. But the pavilion's able to be rented for private parties and private get-togethers. And continuing just across the street and down the road from Rock Springs Park is our Wildland Hand Park, which is just under twelve acres, five soccer fields, one outdoor basketball court, and restroom facilities as well. This is one of those properties that's just always there for the community, constantly being used. We partnered with the LCYFO to run the soccer league there in the spring and the summer. We have our Park After Dark there in the fall around the Halloween time. We also, like I said before, just finished up our flag football league that was just under three other kids, that just covered up every field that we had there. We had to make arrangements to add a field at the Lee Russell Complex into one deep-out field, other baseball fields. This property's also used anytime. If there's, you know, a couple of AYSO community groups are going on to sectionals and regionals, and we're there to always help them out. We've added lights there so they can continue their practices going on in the future here for next year, that we can continue to be there for the community. Town Creek Greenway is another one, it's one point seven miles with a walking trail on the way, and this property's used daily, no matter the rain, weather, snow, sleet, there's a constant group that is always there every morning, sometimes they even beat our crews out there before we can get the leaves off of them. But the events that we've held there in the past is the Run Loco, the LCHS, High School Track and Cross Country with the multiple five K's that we've been part of in the past few years. One thing that we have done over the last seven, eight months, we did put together a Parks and Rec Committee and put out a survey out to the community, and the responses back, one of the questions was, a couple of questions, we're looking to, what are we doing well, what we can expand on, what you would like to see us expand on, and then, you know, everybody wants newer things or nicer things and stuff to provide for the community. But the biggest question at the end was, you know, how would you be able to, ideas that you would give us to be able to pay for it? Over seven, about sixty-eight to seventy percent said they would rather have a sales tax increase to be able to pay for those potential increases, either at different facilities that have pickleball courts, extend the walking trail, the Big Pie in the Sky down the road, eventually be a rec center that would service zero to a hundred age-wise in the community for anything that we would be able to do for the community. And the resonant response was to do a sales tax referendum that would go to Parks and Recreation. So, everything I just went over, kind of like the mayor mentioned earlier, we do it with one director, recently hired event coordinator, and three maintenance men. We have one foreman and two members, and I'm not saying that to say, you know, feel sorry for us as much as we have to take care of it. It is what it is, it's the facts, and we, you know, we just pull up our bootstraps and we get it done, whatever it is. And I've been fortunate enough with the three guys that we have, and they're just, you know, hard workers, they don't mind the work, which is the best part of it, because there's plenty of it for us to do. Multiple teams, about to here, we're working seven days a week to make sure we have a good product out there for the community to enjoy it and enjoy with their family. And everything Parks and Rec, like I mentioned before, is the community, with over seventy-five acres of facilities and parks. You know, the parks aren't for me, they're not for you, they're for everyone in the community. That's our, facilities are the same way in all our programs. And a couple of notes from our programs, like I said, in the spring softball, spring baseball and softball, we had over four hundred and ninety participants, Andrew from four to thirteen. I honestly believe if we had enough space and we could move another age group in to have more of a high school age group, I think we'd probably add another hundred kids. We just don't have the space. Similar to fall baseball and fall softball, like I mentioned, we had five hundred and nine kids a part of those programs this year, and that was up by about seventy kids, which is about fifteen percent from last year. And that's similar to spring, we've grown by about eleven to twelve percent since twenty twenty-four, so that's just, you know, if we continue to grow that way, we never have, and I don't want to do this, but the potential there is to eventually have to turn the kids away if they don't sign up in time, and I don't want to do that. I want to be able to have something for every kid to enjoy. That's where, that's where I grew up, being able to enjoy the sports leagues, enjoy the parks. That's actually why I wanted to get into Parks and Recreation, even go through as a, in college and then into my career. And similar for basketball, we only have the War Memorial Building to hold fifty-four teams, and we try to get them a practice a day, or a practice a week, excuse me, and that's honestly not enough. We've been able to luckily partner with the Boys and Girls Club just right beside the War Memorial Building, and even with those two gyms, it's not enough to get those teams that one practice a week throughout the season. So, we're stretching out to schools to probably try to partner with them, and they're not able to use their facilities as well, and that's just, we're just trying to strive to continue to have something to provide a high quality of life for the community, and that's what we strive to do. That's, you know, my guys have great attitudes of just, et cetera, they're just picking you up by your bootstraps and figuring out how to get done and how to try to work the best that we can for our community and offer that high quality of life. It just comes down to it, when we were talking about potential funding through a sales tax referendum, it just kind of struck us that, you know, for, we want to do and have things for the public, have nice things for the public, and whether it's have something for them to do, whether it's individually or with their family, and that's Parks and Recreation and part of our things that we're getting into, most of them, like I said, the memorial buildings since nineteen fifty-one, other facilities are in the eighties, and so we're looking to leave things better than we found it, and that's what it comes down to. We want to still have a high quality of life for the community, still be able to provide great programs and great events for the community, have parks and walking trails and things for the community to do. People don't stay here and live here because it's just low on taxes. They stay and live here because they have high quality of life with the programs, the facilities that we're able to provide for them, and it goes directly to just being able to be here for the community and whatever means it needs to.
How many kids do you think that's county kids that's using the Parks and Rec, Little City Parks and Rec? City Parks and Rec? And does Loudon County currently have a Parks and Rec facility?
As far as the county goes, I can't particularly put an amount or a percentage on that are necessarily living just in the county and not in the city. But, I mean, there obviously is kids that live in the county and can use our programs. Loudon County doesn't have a separate Parks and Rec community or department that is able to put on programs, none of the city of Loudon puts on. Couple of programs, most of their programs are for the adults. The only thing that maybe the city of Loudon has, it's not actually through their governments, either through upward or the city of, the school of Philadelphia has a basketball program, but they only use it for their school. They don't let kids from Loudon County, Little City, kids from, you know, upper end of the county to go into it as well. But countywide, there's not a Loudon County Parks and Rec department that takes care of the county kids.
And I know, obviously, there's Eaton Road Ten Park, I think it's, is it still funded?
That is, it's a little bit different than it used to be, and that's, I mean, that's some of our growth issues that we're having is, a few years ago, it used to be a separate park that had their own baseball and their own softball, but that's since folded. And they've had other people come in through that community, through the Eaton, try to build it back up, make it a separate program, and they just never have, never been able to do that. So, right now, it's currently a five-person club, and they, I believe they ran out, or allow North Middle to use one of the baseball fields for their baseball program. And then, they ran out a separate field for a couple of local travel ball teams that use their facility just for practices. But it's not taking, you know, any kids away from us as a separate program.
Any questions from Mr. Kuzin?
I'm just impressed you're able to get so much done with only five people.
But like I said, I mean, we've got a great group of guys.
Yeah, overtime.
And stuff like that, I mean, that's one of it. There is a lot of overtime. I mean, it's not out of the ordinary for my guys to have sixty hours in a week, most of them getting close to a hundred for a payday, for a pay period, excuse me. And that's just, luckily, they don't mind the work, but it's, it is what it is, but we get through it and we push everything through.
I think, you know, sort of an overarching theme of, you know, everything that you're talking about, and then also what Mr. Gibbons and his team are talking about, is kind of the health and wellness of our community. You know, you're dealing with, you know, the youth, and seniors too, that utilize our walking trails, but mainly, you're dealing with the youth in our community in all of these different sports, whether they be using, you know, soccer fields, or, you know, flag football, or, you know, baseball, all of it. You know, keeping those kids out, moving, being able to interact with each other and their children, you know, not staying at home in the dark on their video games, you know, getting them out there, you know, getting them, you know, starting in the right direction of health in their life. And then, things that Habitat is doing is helping with, you know, the other side, the seniors, those with disabilities, the veterans who are living in, you know, situations of mold and mildew and things that are not good for their health. So, I think really, this is really about the health and wellness of our community in total.
Any questions, any comments?
And I'm amazed at what you all do for, with how many people that you have, so.
Thank you.
Let me just say though, Mary, and after all the lists that you just went over, that didn't even include all that you all do for our downtown, all the festivals, all the nights on Broadway, everything that goes on down there. I have yet to not see you all there way before anybody else gets there and way after, taking care of chairs, helping trash cans, but everything, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for that shout-out, I was trying to keep up. Stuff we do behind the scenes, behind the scenes.
It's great.
Because I mean, those are our events, we just, like I said, we're here for the community, so we help out when downtown has their things in any way we can.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Tony, thank you all, yourself, for coming, and we look forward to, if there are objections, it's going to, we're going to have a December the eighth meeting, get the first vote, and a public hearing at 5:30, so you all will write that down. And obviously, that passes in December the twenty-ninth, public hearing at 5 o'clock.
Yes.
And we'll try to keep everything else, if we have any other business, I think we have a few items, but we'll try to keep pretty short. And please, if there are any objections, we'll return. Thank you all.
Thank you.